Good evening and welcome to the October 5, 2022 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I need to read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, October 5, 2022, at 5:30 in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend. Remote access provided is provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website under the Agendas and Minutes tab by selecting the Planning Board. I will begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin, Susan Britta, Will Rubenstein, Chris Vincent, Jim Saban, Joanne Crowley, here. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'll now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation for this meeting during the comment period for this public hearing, or at my discretion during the balance of the public meeting, I will invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the raise hand button to notify me. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and their affiliation for public record. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So this evening, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the Planning Board zoning article for the 2022 special town meeting. The zoning article is number 22, now numbered number 22, the Village Center Overlay District. I would now like to open the public hearing, and I note the time as...
Which time?
5:32.
5:32, there we go. Thank you, Kathy. For zoning article now numbered 22, under consideration for the Town of Yarmouth Special Town Meeting to be held on November 15, 2022. I thank you for joining us this evening, those who are here in person and those who are joining us remotely. Following protocol for public hearings, I would now like to read into the record the public notice announcing this meeting as it appeared in the Cape Cod Times on September 19 and the 26th. This will also serve as a brief overview of the amendments under consideration this evening. Yarmouth Public Hearing Notice, Yarmouth Planning Board. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 5, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the hearing room of the Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664, and via remote access at the website https://us02web.zoom.us or via telephone at 301-715-8592 and entering the webinar ID 898-3641-5124 to consider the following proposals to amend the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. One, amend Section 202.5 Use Regulation Table to allow for use A2, two-family dwellings to be located within the VC1, VC2, VC3, and VC4 zoning districts. Number two, amend Section 414 Village Center Overlay District to require adherence to Section 302.1 fulfill in excess of four feet, increase the maximum front yard setback in VC1 to 25 feet for properties within flood zones, allow for more relief to be given via special permit, modify the sidewalk requirements along Route 28 frontage, clarify that shop windows or displays apply only to commercial uses, modify the options for window styles on upper floors, clarify when dormers or other architectural elements are required on pitched roof lines, identify the style of roof models allowed in all of the villages, allow for breaks in the landscape buffers for water access and water views, and defer to the sign bylaw for size of freestanding signs within the VCOD. Copies of the complete proposed text for the amendment are available at the Planning Department, Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664 during business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, and on the Town of Yarmouth website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on these proposals to amend the zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments will be accepted and should be directed to the Planning Board, care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner, at kwilliams@yarmouth MA.us, no later than October 4, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Signed by me, the Chair of the Yarmouth Planning Board, Joanne Crowley. So let me review how we're going to work this public hearing. These protocols are pretty standard. Again, I want to emphasize that this hearing relates only to the proposed amendments in the Village Center Overlay District. Kathy and I are going to run through a presentation on the proposed article that has been developed by the Planning Board. We've been reviewing this particular article over the course of several months. After the presentation, I will invite any one of you or members of the public who might be joining us remotely to public comment on this particular article number 22. If you do so, please give your name and address, and then Kathy will review with us any written comments that she may have received. So with that, I'd like to start with the public hearing presentation on the proposed Village Centers Overlay District. I believe some of you may have copies of this. If not, we can provide it, no?
No, I didn't print out copies of that. They have the copies of the article.
Oh, of the article, okay. Welcome to the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments to the Village Center Overlay District, VCOD, being proposed by the Planning Board for the Fall Special Town Meeting on November 15 at 6:00 p.m. at the Matices Middle School. I hope you will join us there. Please note that the Planning Board will also be holding a mandatory public hearing on a citizen's petition to modify the zoning bylaw related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, on October 19, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in this hearing room and via remote access. This petition was not developed by the Planning Board, and the project proponents will be presenting their proposed amendments on the 19th, that is, in two weeks. Subsequent to the public hearing, the Planning Board will be making their recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on the citizen's petition article. Let me introduce the Planning Board members who are here this evening. I am the Chair, Joanne Crowley. Jim Saban, who is with us remotely, is the Vice Chair. Will Rubenstein, to my right, is our clerk. We also have Brad Goodwin, who could not join us this evening, Chris Vincent, to my far right, and Susan Britta, next to me. Kathy Williams, of course, is our key member of support staff here at the Town Planner. Not quite sure what we would do without her. We are also, we're one member short of the Planning Board. We have an authorized level of seven, so any of you or any relatives or friends that you might want to encourage, we would welcome their participation. Kathy's going to start and give us a brief overview. What are the VCOD? What is the Village Center Overlay District? And what these amendments are that we're going to be considering this evening for your comment?
So I just kind of want to be clear to everyone that the amendments that we're talking about this evening only apply to the Village Centers Overlay District, which runs along a segment of Route 28 from basically Winslow Gray Road all the way to just near Lyman Lane, which is right next to Town Hall. So we're talking about just this particular section of the zoning bylaw. So what's the purpose of the amendments? What are we trying to do? We're really trying to just simplify some of the complexities within the bylaw and allow for more flexibility in implementing it while also maintaining our very high design standards that the VCOD is known for. Just to give you an idea, the VCOD bylaw takes up about 25 pages or 15% of our zoning bylaw, so it is a little bit of a denser, more complex zoning bylaw. There also are a lot of great deal of specificity in some of the requirements that may not always be providing any substantial benefits to the overall project or the look of the project that we want to take a look at. And there's also limited relief that's available through special permit resulting in even some minor design deviations needing to go through a variance. So why are we taking a look at this now? Well, we have, we've had a handful of projects that have gone through the VCOD, but none of them have actually been built. We have to, through these various processes of these past projects and some projects that might be coming up and looking at projects in the flood zone, we identified certain provisions that we felt we needed to take another look at and modify to make it easier to use the VCOD bylaw. So I'm just going to go through those changes with you this evening. So one of the first changes is right now, if you fill anything in the VCOD of four feet or more, that's prohibited and it would require a variance. And that can be really difficult if you are in a special flood hazard area, which a lot of the VC1 and some of the VC2 is located in that area. So this First Amendment would just provide protections, still provide the protections by requiring a permit from the Building Commissioner if you're going to fill four feet or more per an existing section in the zoning bylaw. So we're just referring back to something that's already in our zoning bylaw. The Second Amendment there is increasing the maximum front yard setback just in the Village Center 1 from 20 feet to 25 feet for those properties that are located in the flood zones. If you need to be a little bit higher, it might be beneficial to be back a little bit further from the road in order to blend in the building into the streetscape a little bit better. We're also looking at allowing for more relief to be given by special permit. Right now, special permit relief is only allowed for dimensional requirements like lot size, frontage, or minimum front side or rear setbacks. This amendment would allow for most relief to be available via special permit. Would still have to be a public hearing through the Zoning Board of Appeals, except for the maximum front yard setback and building height, which would still require a variance if someone wanted to amend those. We're also taking a look at modifying the sidewalk requirements along Route 28 frontage to avoid duplication. So if you have a sidewalk in front of your property right now, we're going to say you don't need to put one in now, but let's accommodate in your design a future expansion maybe of the layout of mass DOT, so you could have a six-foot sidewalk on your property. If there's one there, if there's nothing there now, then you have to construct it. So we're just kind of clarifying when you do or do not need to have a sidewalk constructed. The next item is they're clarifying shop windows or displays apply only to commercial uses. There's some other uses, maybe a public restroom or municipal pump station. We're going to have sewer coming along, along Route 28, where you don't want shop windows and displays. Right now, it's mandatory. So this just clarifies that those particular types of elements are going to be required for commercial uses only. And then the last one here is to modify the options for window styles on upper floors. The bylaw right now is very specific and has like a one-to-two ratio of requirements, which is very specific. So we are really softening that requirement by referencing double-hung windows or other acceptable styles. So if you wanted to have a bay window, for example, you would be able to have something like that. Some additional changes, we're just kind of clarifying when dormers or other architectural elements are going to be required, specifying that it needs to be 50 feet or more in length. There might be shorter stretches where you don't really need a dormer, and it may not be appropriate. Or there might be other architectural elements like a cupola that might make more sense. So we're giving some of the designers a little bit more flexibility, but still having it look nice. The next amendment is just kind of identifying the style of roof models that are allowed in all of the villages, and these could include gables or gambrels or hip roofs or mansard or flat roofs. And we're also specifying that the flat roofs, continuing to specify, I should say, that the flat roofs need architectural elements and details to have a decorative edge. We also added and concealing HVAC or other type of heating equipment or cooling equipment on the roof of a flat roof. The next item is allowing for breaks in landscape buffers for water access and water views. If you're located next to a water body, I think that's one of the things you're really going to want, is have water access and water views. The next item is basically, right now, the sign bylaw in the VCOD starts talking about different sizes, and all this is doing is saying, let's just make the sizes standard throughout town, and it references back to the sign bylaw and takes out the specific size requirements in the VCOD. And then the last item there is to allow for two-family dwellings to be constructed within all the four villages. Mixed-use and multifamily dwellings are allowed in the VCOD, especially our VC2, which is our residential district, and that's really from east of Parker's River to around Ocean Avenue. And this amendment would allow for duplexes or other types of multifamily housing to be allowed in all four villages. I feel bad because I've just completed my presentation, and we're leaving it to questions.
Thank you, Kathy. I'd now like to invite any members of the public who are here this evening who would have any questions or comments with regard to these to come forward and identify yourselves. Come to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Bolger. I am the President of Hyannis Parks Association, and this is all new information, but I just did have a question as to why specifically we're allowing two-family dwellings along really valuable real estate?
Good question. The primary reason is these Village Center Overlay Districts are meant to encourage, Kathy will correct me if I'm out of bounds here, but are meant to encourage a different look, not just a commercial, Route 28 being a commercial strip up and down. And we have received some inquiries from various developers over the years who would like some leeway to have two-family duplexes as part of their project in each of the overlay districts. And so we decided to put that out there as a possibility for consideration, listening to the public. We had our own discussions about this, whether we should have it in all four districts, limited to only a couple of the districts where residential are now allowed. So that was our thinking behind it.
Okay, and as far as, have you had any proposals in terms of the commercial development?
Excuse me?
Have you had any proposals for the commercial development?
Kathy, you can mention this again, but we have not.
Yeah, we've had three projects that have come through and gotten permitted, like you say, haven't been built. Two of them are mixed-use, and one of them was assisted living.
Okay. I guess my concern is that as a resident, I feel that we need to move forward on revenue-generating projects along this particular strip of... And I guess I'd like to hear more about that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I want to just emphasize that these four VCOD districts are on only a segment of Route 28, as Kathy had described, and in most cases are only one or two lots off of 28. It's a very narrow strip boundary on either side of 28. Doesn't even go down, not that you would be looking for something just in your own neighborhood. We appreciate that, looking out for the whole town. None of the districts are in the Hyannis Park area, which I'm sure you know. So, yes, Kathy?
I guess my only point would be that we're not changing any of the parameters with regard to the mixed-use requirements or the residential density. This just allows someone to maybe put two duplexes next to each other instead of having a fourplex. We're not changing the density. We're not changing the requirements for mixed-use. It's just another multifamily option-style building that would be allowed.
Any other public questions, any questions or comments? Yes?
Hi, I'm Maria Marasco from Pleasant Street. I am also the Vice Chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee, but I'm here, this question actually has to do, is my own question and relative to the work that I currently do for the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. We place solar on buildings primarily for the Town of Yarmouth and other municipalities. So for a developer who wants to install solar, what are, are there any accommodations that would need to be made in terms of sightlines, et cetera, relative to what you're proposing? Are there any restrictions or concerns that would otherwise need to be addressed? That's all.
I don't think there's anything in the bylaw that says you can't have solar.
I think the only thing is, is when you're designing your project, you need to orient your buildings kind of the correct way, and that's kind of up to the individual developer on how they lay that out.
Okay, so from this, from the road and from us looking towards a building, there would not, there wouldn't be, so if you saw solar panels, would there be anything in this that would be restrictive?
No.
No? Okay, that's very good. And then, again, as an individual, I would actually like to reiterate the comment from my, another resident here, that I really do believe that Route 28 should be reserved solely for revenue generation and becoming a economic, commercial driver for lots of reasons. We're flatlined when it comes to our commercial businesses here. That puts an extraordinary strain on our residents in terms of tax, the tax burden shifting to them. So where we look at what we have available, we understand the critical need for housing, but in terms of balancing that against the townwide need to improve all of our economic development here in town, I would like to see the Route 28, I would like to see that housing limited and defer to more commercial development along Route 28. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Because I would only say that these are not more wide-ranging changes. These are considered relatively minor. So that's certainly something that could be discussed in the future, but I don't think we can add anything like that into the bylaw for the Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Tommie Cannell from the very historic Precinct 3. And speaking about energy, and thank you all for your hard work and your dedication to our town, as it's truly positive. To what Ms. Marasco was talking about, solar energy. As you know, we have electronic vehicles today which need electricity, and up and down our corridor and here on 28, which is part of the corridor, we provide electronic charging systems for our vehicles. There was a application back in August for some electronic charging vehicles for our residents, free of charge to them, provided there be some advertising on the window screen on the charging unit. It was denied because of the, as you know, if it's not printed in our zoning bylaws, it's not allowed. So as our corridor develops and we develop more electronic use, is it the intention of the Planning Board in the future to talk about these electronic charging units providing free electricity to our residents for their vehicles? And the way that the charging units are paid for the free electricity is through the advertising. So I was just wondering if in the future that the Planning Board discussed some of these alternatives for our residents to get free electricity. And because it's an ad and it's an advertising, it's a sign, so it's pretty complicated, because as you all know, signs are very complicated. But if the charging unit is facing away from any major roadway, would it be detrimental to provide that free service for our customers to get free electricity if the advertisers were allowed to install those? So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have had someone reach out to me with regard to having a discussion with the Planning Board about those signs, and I asked them to defer until after Special Town Meeting so that we would be able to get through this. So I would anticipate this being presented to the Planning Board at a future meeting.
We're all aware of the Zoning Board of Appeals denial that we get, we received a record of that. So, and Kathy has also been in contact with them sometime in the near future, but after Special Town Meeting. Thank you. I'd like now to move on to the Planning Board discussion of this and ask for any Planning Board members who have questions or comments. Susan?
Thank you. The, the package of amendments is actually very good and in many respects gives us a lot more design options, which is always great along Route 28. The one amendment that I had concerns about at the last meeting and continue to have concerns about is the amendment that was mentioned by both the people in the audience, the relaxing of the prohibition on duplexes along 28 in the VCOD program. In fact, it was almost 10 years ago, Kathy, on October 11, that we actually, at the town meeting, we actually passed the VCOD, and I dragged out some of my, sometimes it pays to be a pack rat. I dragged out some of our old material and looked at what went into developing the concept of VCOD along Route 28. And it was totally driven by the need for more economic stability, economic vitality along 28. And the idea of coming up with those villages, each with a little bit of a different characteristic, was reviewed by, I mean, there's a list here of the Bluestone Group, the Nostar Group, the Hotel, the Cecil Group. They even have the Cape Cod Commission involved. There's a regional policy planning group that was involved, plus of course, our own, the town planning group, the board and the staff. And from the beginning, it was, the concept was they wanted a little more density at several of these major intersections in the VC, in the areas along 28, and combine top-of-a-shop living with some commercial activity at the, at the, at grade. And there was a, I never could find out why there was a prohibition on not doing duplexes, but they wanted something more than duplexes because they wanted that concept of village concept, more density, so that you could get more people in a smaller area and sort of create a small village atmosphere. All the studies reinforced that concept, and I couldn't find anything that actually talked about with concern that you prohibited duplexes. So I have, I expressed concern about it last time. I'm still concerned. In fact, I'm more convinced now that we should not be relaxing, and we should not be taking 10 years' worth of planning and all of a sudden saying, okay, let's do duplexes. That was never the concept. It was always supposed to be a little more dense with commercial activity at these major intersections and try to create, because Yarmouth unfortunately does not have a main street. All of 28 is our main street. We don't sort of have a village center. So the idea was, let's create a string of villages along 28 to sort of create some sort of economic activity. And I think relaxing the prohibition against duplexes loots that instead of reinforces it. And, but the rest of it, I think, is terrific. I think the design standards, the infill stuff is very good. We should have been doing that. But I am concerned, and I also think if it is such a good idea to examine duplexes, then I think the Planning Board should take that idea, match it against what the VCOD was intended to do, and see if it will have an impact, negative or positive, and then come back to the citizens with a recommendation about whether we should change it. I don't think it's good planning to make the change based on a request from one unnamed or a couple of contractors that we were told, the reason they wanted to make the change was they did not want to invest in life safety features that are required when you have more than two families in the building, namely, I guess it was fire safety. I don't think that's a good way to plan. I don't think it's a good way to make decisions. It seems to have worked. We may not have had anything developed yet, but the idea was very solid, and I don't think we should ought to step away from it now simply because some guy's concerned about his bottom line. I know that's not popular, but that's, I always thought the idea was a great idea. I always liked the idea of the village overlay. I like the idea of the concentration at the intersections, sort of cafes, people actually walking. That's the whole concept of a village. You had you walk to go get your coffee, walk to pick up a newspaper, maybe walk to a dry cleaner, and you do that when you've got a concentration of people. You don't get that with a duplex. A duplex is a duplex. It's a house with two doors.
Can I just be clear when you say a duplex? It's just a type of housing.
Right.
So the number, it's not changing the density, it's not changing the number of people on a particular property, but like I said, instead of having, say, a particular property could have eight residential units on it because of the density...
could have eight residential units on it because of the density, they might have four duplexes instead of two fourplexes. You might find that living in a duplex is a nicer living environment than living with a shared wall for someone, so there's other reasons why people are moving towards duplexes.
Except, except for the fact it takes up more space. The reason you like the concentration is it's less ground space, it's less footprint, and you want, you want a more condensed footprint. So, and again, it goes back to the ideas that they developed 10 years ago and have been reinforced.
We're not changing the, we're not changing anything regarding density, so it's not like we're allowing more people to live there, the density doesn't, requirement doesn't change, it's just the manner of building that you're, you're putting up, which is really it.
The manner of building requires more space.
And if you, well, that's okay, that's up to the developer that's going to do it, and more green space would be beautiful if you're living in that, in that kind of an area that allows you to have more open space, which is a nice thing. I would say that, I think there's a misconception here that residential is not allowed in any of the other areas, but it, it is allowed throughout.
Right.
Okay? So it's not like we're suddenly allowing residential, it's just one type of a building. And I would venture to guess, I would say that if you drove by one of these, because they have to adhere to these architectural design standards, which are more strict in this area than other parts, you wouldn't know that it was a two-family dwelling.
Madam Chair?
Guarding the fire sprinklers? That's absolutely correct. The building code says that if you have a two-story dwelling, you don't need to put in fire protection. If you have a three-story, excuse me, a three-story, a three-family or greater, you are required to put in fire sprinklers. Now, that doesn't mean that these buildings are built unsafe, because they still have to adhere to the building codes by our construction standards, there's party walls, there's a lot of safety built into the building code, separate from fire sprinklers, there's 20-minute ratings, there's all kinds of ratings that we have to adhere to as builders. So if you want to generate revenue, let these be built and tax them. And that's where your revenue's going to come from, just like you would tax a commercial building. And then separately from that, the people that live in these two-family dwellings will walk to those commercial uses, it's that the VCOD is there to support. So you want the people to live here so they can walk and use those buildings. If nobody lives there, they're not going to walk to these buildings, and you've just defeated the purpose of it. So this is an enhancement to the VCOD, and I think we should accept it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Jim Saban? Yeah, Mr. Saban?
Yes, good, thank you, Madam Jim. Just a couple of quick comments. So what we currently have in place is not working. There's no economic development along Route 28, whether it be a three-unit or a one-unit. I, I think that's not an issue for, for economic development. I'm a big proponent for protecting Route 28, and I think we can do it by also including duplexes as, as part of that process. I was very disappointed when the Cavalier, when they pulled the retail from that project. I would like to, to see the duplexes applied to mixed use, and I think economics are going to drive the redevelopment of Route 28 more than whether we decide for a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, I mean, a three-unit or a two-unit. Most developers are not going to be really concerned because of the cost of a sprinkler system, they're going to build that into their profit margins and make that work. So the fewer restrictions we have to promote economic development and redevelopment along Route 28, I'm, I'm in favor of, and I think by reducing this, we may, we may find somebody who's more interested in developing because they can design something with two units versus three.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay. I'd like us to just take a quick, we're going to take a vote on the article, and I'd like to just first take a quick look at the draft memo to the Board of Selectmen and see on the language that's in there, if anyone has any comments with regard to the draft memo to the Board of Selectmen. And we will include our vote and, on this, on these deliberations in it, if there are no other comments on the memo.
Is that in the package?
Is it?
Yes. Yeah, yep, it's still, it's in draft.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
Are there any written comments that we've received?
We've received no written comments. Any, any comments at all with regard to the memo to the Board of Selectmen? Okay, so what I would like to do is offer up a motion, ask for a motion to, to recommend Article 22 as it is currently written, and take a vote on that. So may I have a motion to recommend zoning Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend various sections of the zoning bylaw, to modify certain provisions related to this village center's overlay district?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion?
This says Article 25, is it Article 25 or Article 22?
They keep changing it as things come out, so.
It is.
As of last night. 10 o'clock, it was 22.
Okay.
And the petition article is now 23.
Okay.
Any, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? Are we going to vote on the sections of this individually or as a, as a package?
As a package, it is Article number 22.
Okay.
So we have a motion, we have a second. I'd like to take a roll call vote. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
No.
Joanne Crowley? Yes. Motion passes five, excuse me, four to one, and that's what we will include in the, in the memo to the Board of Selectmen. Motion passed four to one. We have one other item to take care of, and that is at town meeting, I need to, one of us needs to be the member to move, recommend, and explain the article. Do I have any volunteers? If not, I will move to recommend and explain.
November 15th at 6:00 PM at Matta Keys?
Oh, I have to say all that?
No, he asked me.
I was just making sure when the, what the date was.
Sorry, sorry, Kathy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question, were we supposed to close the public hearing? Is there a formal process to that, or we just keep moving?
Yep, I'm on it. We're going to do it, we, I left the meeting open purposely until we voted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and finish discussion, and finish the discussion on the memo, and who's going to present at town meeting. The meeting is, the hearing is still open. So I guess I have volunteered to present, move, recommend, and explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So may I have a, may I have a motion to close the public hearing on Article 22, Village Center Overlay District for the special town meeting on November 15th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. Next on our agenda is the citizen petition article. Also, the planning board received just last week, on September 28th, from the Board of Selectmen, a citizen petition to amend the zoning bylaw related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. The required public hearing for this petitioned article will be conducted, as I mentioned before, in two weeks, on October 19th, at 5:30 PM in the town hall hearing room, and also via remote access. After this public hearing, planning board will be providing the Board of Selectmen with our recommendation on that petitioned article. So I just wanted to remind everyone that in two weeks, we will be conducting another public hearing on this petitioned article that we just received. There's some reviews we have to go through ourselves to understand it, and we've got a couple of weeks to do that, which is, we wish we had more time, but we don't. So, any other comments on that discussion item for next meeting?
I have a question, Madam Chair. So I'm just curious about the sequencing of all this, because I recognize that we're going to have a public hearing the day after the Board of Selectmen has their hearing, so I guess my real question is, net-net, is the town meeting warrant going to show our recommendation or not if our hearing is after the Board of Selectmen's hearing?
It, it may not show, and we may have to state it on the
On the floor.
Floor of town, special town meeting.
Okay, well, that concerns me, because, you know, I'm, I'm confused as to why the sequencing hap, is happening the way it's happening? I just, was there a deadline that was not met?
With petition by, no, but with petitioned bylaws, they met the requirements for it, but we had already publicly noticed our hearing for this evening. So the earliest with which we could do the proper notifications to meet the statutory requirements was the 19th.
I got it.
So we, we couldn't do any better.
Okay, thank you. That was my question, Madam Chair.
Are we having discussion on this now, or is this?
We, we can, if you'd like, but I
Save some time, sure.
I, I, I think whatever substantive discussion we want to have, we would want to have it at that public hearing, so that the public can hear it.
That's the next week, two weeks.
So I'd prefer not to have a lot of discussion about it, other than some clarifications.
I have a couple of questions. The, the copy that I have, which I, this is now going to be Article 24, is that correct, Jim?
23, I believe. As of last night, it was 23.
And Jim, maybe you could, since you've been so active in this, this says, the very first number says amend Article 4. What is Article 4? Is that sec, is that the same as Section 407?
If I can give you any answers, Susan.
Yeah.
Is it 407?
407, accessory apartments.
No, they're not amend, if I can make that clear, I think what they mean by Article 4 is, there's Article 1 Admin, Article 2 Direct District Regulations, Article 3 General Regulations, Article 4 Special Regulations. They want to add it to special regulations. I think if this, this moves forward, some formatting recommendations might be warranted to tell them to put it in as Section 419, which is the next ver, the next open number in the special regulations, and they're also referencing a use 813, which we've already used for short-term rentals, so they'd need to change that. So there are some things that they would need, or I would recommend that they make changes to on the town meeting floor, or someone else does, so that it can, if it passes by chance, it has a place to sit within the zoning bylaw.
It just looks like it's part of Section 407. It's so, so, so similar.
So this is a standalone section, Jim, in addition to 407? Is that how we're reading this?
I'm not the author.
Section 419, accessory dwelling units?
That's my opinion, yes.
And it's separate from accessory apartments?
They never say anything about deleting Section 407 or adding this at the end of 407. It would be very confusing. I don't know how you administer it as 407, it makes no sense keeping 407 because it would be far more restrictive than this bylaw, so everyone would go to this new bylaw, I would think.
So striking 407?
No, I don't, I do not believe that the article is currently written, strikes 407.
I don't see that, do you? I just
I think these are some of the questions that we
Looks like tomato, tomato.
Yeah, well, I think these are some of the questions we need to direct to the petitioners. Oh, I would hope so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
I would concur with your comments. I think it's best that we have this discussion with the petitioners. Unfortunately, on the 19th, our company is hosting the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce annual event, and I may not be able to attend this meeting, and I'm not, so I just want to put that out there that I, I just, I not, might not be able to attend, so I think it's important.
You wouldn't be able to vote, Jim, but you could send in some written comments or something.
I can certainly do that, but I think it's important that we just wait to hear from the petitioners and answer those questions from them, rather than speculate anything at this time.
Yeah, thank, thank you for bringing up the date. We had nothing planned for the 19th.
No, we, we had something planned for this, but we moved it.
Moved it, sorry. And, and then it became, we had to move it, and I've already talked with the chamber, and it's unfortunate that there is this collision of two important meetings, but we have no choice but to, in order for this to be, to statutorily cover our, our basis here, we have to have it on the 19th. Had we received it earlier, we might have been able to do something differently, but we didn't. Okay, so any further discussion on the citizens petition article? I would recommend that you get, we, we prepare our questions and be ready to fully engage with the petitioners. This, this particular, in my opinion, this particular part of our zoning is very complicated and, and requires thoughtful review and deliberation by professionals who understand and work with zoning bylaws like we do, and like our town planner does, and that the, the difficulty and complications and the vetting that these kinds of changes to zoning bylaws go through is very important. Just for these relatively simple changes we've recommended to the board this evening, we have spent months vetting these, talking about them, meeting with the public, changing them, dropping them, adjusting them. We will have one meeting with the petitioners in two weeks to discuss this very complicated issue, and I, I, I trust that as many people who would be engaged in the discussions can, can join us for that meeting. All right, moving on. We have minutes from our September 21st meeting. Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kathy, on page three under eight, it says, Board Member Item Susan Britta Inquired. I wasn't here that night, so it couldn't have been me.
Oh, I must have copied it from, sorry. So we can change that to none.
Yeah, or avatar or something like that, but it wasn't me. Although I would have asked about that had I been here. Let's put it that way.
With your previous behavior.
For sure.
Someone must have asked about it. I just assumed it was
In the room, Susan.
It was on the ZBA, it was on the ZBA agenda, so I think that's what triggered us to mention it at that last meeting, but it was not Susan.
Right, did anybody inquire about it, though? Someone specific?
No, it did, it did come up, I can't remember if it was me or Brad or Jim, I don't
Where are we looking here again?
Sorry, right here.
Page three, Board Member Items, number eight. It says Susan Britta Inquired.
Right here, at the very bottom of the page.
I missed that meeting, so I couldn't
Yeah, I see it, yeah, I'm just
We definitely, it definitely
I thought we did talk about Great Island.
It wasn't Susan.
But it wasn't, it just wasn't me.
About board, board members inquired?
Yeah.
General inquiry.
Oh, I, you know, it was me because they asked for an extension.
Yes.
And it was on the ZBA.
Yes, they had asked for an extension.
And I think they got it, correct, Kathy? They did get the extension, I think, yeah. It is, it has been for sale forever. The sign's on the zooker.
So change item eight from Susan Britta to
Just right, just correcting, now strike Britta and write
Thank you.
Whatever.
See, somebody's reading the minutes.
More than just somebody.
Okay, so may, so may I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended for the September 21st meeting of the planning board?
So moved.
Second.
We need a roll call. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Ms. Crowley?
Aye.
Okay, committee updates. Any committee updates?
We've got a desire review committee meeting coming up next week?
We do. Yeah, for, it kind of rolls into what will be coming before the planning board, but the petitioners for the J Mart, the convenience store gas station, have made some, some pretty large
store gas station, have made some, some pretty large changes and incorporated another parcel into their design, so they would be going to the CEDC on the 11th, looking for some input from the economic benefits of the project, like they did previously, as part of the bylaw, and then they will be going to the Design Review Committee, and then they will be coming to the Planning Board for their, for the formal public hearing on November 16th.
Jim, can I just, I know Brad's not here, but I do want to get, at least get it on the record. Several weeks ago, Brad gave an update on the Housing Trust activities, and he mentioned that some money, I think it was five point something million, had been set aside for a public housing, our housing project on Route 28, which I was totally unaware of, and I was good, if he had been here today, I would have followed up with him to ask for a little more clarification. So I want to get it on the record now, or at least ask, because I've asked several town employees, what is going on with the, you know?
So this was an action by the Affordable Housing Trust?
I don't know. Brad was participating by his own, and it was really hard to hear him that
Recall, it was that large an amount?
No, it's not.
I believe it was much smaller than that.
Yes, there was an RFP, a Request for Proposals that went out for the Affordable Housing Trust. I thought it was like $520,000 for a project in order to
It was 520, it was a little more than a half a million, yeah, a little, it was a little more than a half a million. And then, but I couldn't hear him, so I didn't want to sort of prolong the meeting, because it was, Zoom things are difficult. But I did follow up to see if I had missed something, because I said I, so I asked two town staffers, and you know what the answer was? Go talk to the Planning Committee. They should know about this. And I said, "I'm on the Planning Committee."
Who did you speak with?
Well, I'm not going to say who I spoke with.
Alls I'm saying is that the Affordable Housing Trust regularly gets funds, they get CPA funds every year, they accumulate them into a certain pot of money, and then they go out for an RFP to look for ways of creating affordable housing. And they received two fairly competitive proposals. I think Brad had mentioned the Habitat for Humanity, which is across the street here, and I think that would end up being like seven houses there. But then there was also another proposal for the old Cape Cod Vacation Condos at 91 Route 28, that was viewed, I believe, as advantageous, whereas the Habitat was highly advantageous, so they're moving forward with Habitat. That doesn't mean that they're not going to fund that project as well, if they have additional funds. So I think that might be what you're talking about, but nothing has gone through any town permitting at this point.
Well, I did finally get ahold of Mary, who's very, very, as you know, is always excellent with
She's the expert.
Information. She did acknowledge that there is a plan for the site, not a plan, but there's a proposal for the site on 28 at the curve, sort of right next to the Hampton Inn. There's a house on the corner, and then there's a vacant lot in back
The old Cape Cod Vacation Condos, 91 Route 28.
And there was, there's an interest, I guess, in moving forward with something on that site. She said various things can happen, it's just still in concept, it could be totally private condos, like a Davenport Development, it could be a mix of private plus affordable, or it could be all funding. And, and she was, she's always very good about giving information, which she was. She said, "This is, this is sort of where it is now," and she did confirm that money had been, I don't know what the correct term is, allocated, or earmarked, or something for that. So I have to believe there's going to be some sort of affordable component there, if they're going to be using some sort of trust fund money. I then actually spoke to several people in Hammers Park, and asked them if they knew anything about a potential project there. They had no idea of any kind of project. I went to the, the Water Resources Group, as you know, is doing a series of informational sessions on Mondays, various Mondays. I went to that one that was focused on Lewis Bay, and brought it up that night, because a lot of people there, of course, were, like, people there. When we were marketing the water project, we were saying, "We're going to get an opportunity to develop stuff along Route 28. It will bring some commercial activity, and some stabilize the tax base, and all that kind of stuff." And asked that night, "Does anyone know anything about this project?" And it was like virtual silence. No one seems to know anything about the project, or if there is
I think Kathy's already answered the issue. I think Kathy's already given a response, which is, there's no permitting happening currently, so there is
There must be something going on, if a half a million dollars has been set aside for something.
I don't know the status of what they've set aside, but they did receive a proposal for that, that they, I think, related, rated as advantageous.
Could we get a briefing on that? We are the Planning Board, and I was mightily embarrassed
I think once it moves further, we can certainly do that, but I don't think it's a real project. I don't think there's any plans. I've seen like a pencil drawing.
There's a plan for 42 units with 64 parking spaces.
With a pencil drawing, I mean, that's, they would need to do a lot more than that to present it to the public.
It's not
This is what I'd like
Review it unless it's formal, so we can't review a hand drawing.
Okay, this is, this is what I'd like to do. One, with regard to that particular proposal, you've already tried to get some information from Mary Wagon, our housing leader here. See whatever information is out there publicly on this.
There is nothing, because I've asked.
Any one of us can attend the Affordable Housing Trust meetings, or view the video, or read the minute.
But, but Mike, I guess, I guess in terms of transparency
Which is how I keep up with what's going on.
My concern is a project of this significance on Route 28, in the climate of wastewater, raising money, what the citizens were sold, I would think there'd be more of a collaborative effort, quite frankly, maybe between the housing people and the Planning Board, but for the Planning Board to be sitting here with half a million dollars allocated to something on Route 28, and we don't know anything about it, I just don't think that's, I don't think that's good for us. I think we should get some sort of briefing, and, and as I said, I called at least five people to try to find out if anyone knew anything about it, and the answer was no. In fact, one person said to me, the first time they heard about it, is when I brought it up at the wastewater meeting. So I don't know how something gets this far along in this day and age.
But how far along actually is it, Susan? I think
It's a plan, it's a plan for 42 units and 60
It sounds like, it sounds like a fantasy, till it comes to us through something formal. There's nothing
I don't think we ought to wait till it comes, since I think we should at least get a briefing.
I guess my point would be, is it would not be something that would normally come before the Planning Board, especially if it's a 40B project. That's something that would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If it's a motel, if they're trying to do it through the HMOD-1, and they can do it by right, again, it wouldn't come to the Planning Board. It would come to the Planning Board if they, if they qualified for the HMOD-1, and they wanted some special permit relief, then that would come to you guys. I have seen nothing other than a, literally, I think it was like a pencil sketch of something that was submitted with the Affordable Housing Trust proposal. Until I, until they sign something, I don't know whether they've, they've moved forward with any type of agreement, or anything along those lines. We're not going to see anything further. I'm not going to see anything further until it moves forward. I can ask Mary what the status is, and relay that back to the board. Like, have they allocated money to it? Is it, how far along is it?
They have allocated, she confirmed that to me.
She confirmed that they've allocated additional
They have, they have set aside, I don't know if that's a correct term, whether it's allocated, or earmarked, or whatever, but
Well, why don't we do, why don't we do this?
Would you get, would you get an update from Mary, and at least get back
So, we'll clarify that there was an RFP, there were respondents to the RFP, and there was a winner.
The winner was, in my, my understanding was Habitat
For humanity, across the street.
But they had some interest in the second proposal, and they, the last I heard is, they were looking to see if they could fund that as well. I haven't talked to Mary since then, so you may be further along with the knowledge.
If you could just gather up whatever's public, Kathy, or whatever you can gather from inside Town Hall, that'd be great. Thank you.
Will do.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Susan, on surprises. None of us want to be surprised, or
Especially the Planning Board. They're supposed to be planners.
Right.
Well, if you've done your planning, which is the zoning bylaw, and they're meeting the zoning bylaw, you've done your job. It's only if a special permit
I don't see this as doing our job. If a project of that size is rolling along, and no one in this board knows anything about it.
I think it's important for the Planning Board to be kept in form of projects, and I think that's part of the reason why you all serve so frequently on other committees, and this is something that if Brad had been here, he probably could have updated you
It's unfortunate he's not here.
I mean, that is, that is our job, as we sit on these other committees, to keep everybody informed about what, what is going on.
And it did, and that's what piqued my interest.
Okay, all right, good. Any other committee updates?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The Capital Budget Committee is off and running, and next week, there will be the first of three nights of department presentations, conversation, and general mirth-making. And that will happen Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. It is a very good process, it is a much improved process, and I encourage anybody who is interested in how our capital spending decisions are made in the town, to participate and to look at the documents as they're produced by Mr. Scott, who's done an incredible job, because there are millions of dollars on the line. And it is a public and transparent process that is still got, you know, some more time to go, but we're in the phase where they're coming before us, and going through, you know, truck by truck, and/or item by item, and that is happening. Secondly, the school building is, sorry, the school building committee had a meeting, and has another meeting tomorrow, and the building is, from everything that we have been told, still on time, and will have children in it in January. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great news.
Madam Chair, the Drive-In Site Committee had a public hearing last week, went very well, not too many in attendance, but the questions were good. It was required, I think, by some sort of environmental regulation, that we have a public hearing at this point, and it was, Kathy went through the presentation, we had a few questions, Jimmy answered a lot of the questions. But the overall reaction seemed to be very positive, that the board walked, there were a few comments about certain, very minor. The big okay was the board walk, which was always a big concern of ours.
So was this the presentation that had gone to the Board of Selectmen?
It's a little bit embellished, yeah.
Okay.
Little update.
For me, the Water Resources Advisory Committee will have a public outreach meeting on October 17th at the Cultural Center. We did have a meeting this past week, where we reviewed progress on, with CDM Smith on their planning. The section, which is Phase 1, which essentially is from the Barsville Line to Parker's River, the DOT portion, has continued to be delayed, so that the second phase, which is from Parker's River essentially to the bridge, is now, we're moving full steam ahead on that, so that kind of swapped positioning on that. And we're beginning, we've had one public outreach meeting, we had it last September on the 19th. We're having another one on October 17th at the Cultural Center. There's a PowerPoint presentation, I think Kathy had sent it to all of you, that we're using for those, for those meetings. With regard to the Community Preservation Committee, we acted on two articles that are now in the warrant, draft warrant. One is an open space acquisition with regard to approximately 10 acres on Higgins-Croll Road, right across from the elementary school, Emmy Small, and the police station, another piece of property owned by the Bishop of the Archdiocese of New Bedford. And that is now on the town warrant for purchase. It's particularly related to the aquifer protection zone, district, rather, and that is an item that will be on the, on the agenda for town meeting. And also CPC had recommended additional monies for Taylor Bray Farm in the amount of 50,000, and that is also an article that will be on special town meeting coming up. So that's what I, that's what I have, yes.
The parcel that's for sale, did any price associated with that, or is it just
That's, that's still confidential. It'll be, I, I'm not sure exactly when it will be revealed, but the, obviously, the price will be
It's 10 acres?
It's approximately 10 acres, yeah. It had been properly subdivided, I think, to 10, 10-unit, 10-single-family homes.
Through an A&R, yeah.
Yeah, through an A&R, yep. Many years ago, many years ago. Any other board items? Correspondence you need, you need to share with us, Kathy, that you haven't already?
Good.
Okay. Any other, and staff updates?
The only thing I would mention is the open space and rec plan. Yes, I'm going before the CONCOM tomorrow. In order to get our fifth and hopefully final ad hoc committee member, we need a Conservation Commission member. We have Planning Board, Disability, Recreation, and Open Space already on board. We are working to execute a contract with West, Weston and Sampson, who provided a very nice cost proposal for us, and then we will be looking for having some type of kickoff meeting at the end of October, like, the 27th to the 31st. Once we get a CONCOM member, I'll send out another email, kind of letting people know about that. We also received three proposals to review for completion of the contract documents and permitting for the park restoration project at the Chase Brook Park, the former Yankee Village, and the Mill Creek, so we're going to be reviewing those and recommending someone for that design and permitting work. As I mentioned, Jmart's coming on November 16th. We are having the, kind of the public input meeting for, just to kind of see how the short-term rentals and the seasonal employee housing went this last summer on the, on November 2nd.